Let's at least do the pledge of allegiance. Look in the camera. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Didn't do it. Okay, so here's the ad. No Richard tonight?
Um, I'm surprised not to see him here.
Maybe we lost him in the shuffle.
I hear he's on his way out of Cambridge.
Is that what it is? Okay, so what else on board this? Anything else, Mark?
Let's see, on the housing correction plan, you had talked about maybe one small, or a couple small zoning updates, and you didn't know where you wanted to target. Or do you want to pass that up to the housing committee? That was a suggestion.
That's something said if they want. I mean, I don't see the need to. You know, we're trying to get affordable in every project that we're doing from now on to at least get a few units in there. Haven't changed the overlay and added anything like that. They come back and say, then maybe revisit it then.
Can we try and push for 10% affordable for any of the... I think that's something Richie had spoken of earlier.
We can try to...
Try and push for 10% of any substantially sized new developments that want to... By Dirkie is going to be substantial.
So how about anything that qualifies for open space?
We can ask for...
That way at least you got a threshold.
Yeah, open space stuff.
But like, I mean, do we want to say, I mean, it's 10 units, right? So do you want to do something like...
No, it's 10%.
No, I know, so if you do 10 units, 10% is one.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, like, do you want to do, do you want to start at 25? Do you want to start at 15 units? Like, what do you want to do?
Well, then if you're going to do that, then that does involve a zoning change for that, because then you have to...
But I think we have to figure out what the economics are before we just put it on a trajectory, no matter what makes the most sense. You don't want, if you can't make money, if you have 12 and you're going to do it too affordable, can you make money off that? You're going to do 12, you know what I'm saying?
Well, maybe give them bonus density to do affordable.
Well, you know what I'm saying, like, what, I don't know what's reasonable.
Maybe give more units if they're affordable, that's...
Right, and take a look and see what other towns similar size have done.
So we can give them, we can give them a little more density, and get a few more lots. The extra lots have to be affordable.
Right, like we did down at Harvard Road.
And then they can do the option of giving it to, giving maybe profit to...
No, see, then you lose the, it has to be an affordable unit. That's the mistake we made up at Harvard Road. We took the money that was the difference of the affordability and gave it all to the town so they don't count, because they're not affordable units.
I know, good point.
So that's why it really needs to be an affordable unit, not the difference in price of a, you know, the town getting the money doesn't benefit affordable units.
Well, it's not one for one, that's for sure. You get some benefit.
You get some benefit.
I mean, so is this something we would ask Maron to research and come back with what's reasonable?
But if you start doing...
Yeah, see what other towns are doing perhaps, then.
See if, if there is a breakpoint number on, after so many units, that makes it affordable, because you can't, and you can't say 20%, even 10% might not be the...
That's what I'm saying, I don't know what the...
25.
25, I don't know.
Yeah, let's see what the others...
Before we go any further with it, and obviously it's going to involve a zoning change if you're going to do it.
Right.
So, okay.
Has to be codified.
Anything else, Mark? Did my job shoveling snow, by the way. Walkways look good.
There you go. Well, thank you, Bill, for setting a room up for us, so at least you didn't have to do that.
Oh, that's nice.
Should have kicked this selectmen out of our place.
You should have fought hard, Mark, next time. Arm wrestle, do something.
Probably an arm wrestle, something.
Thursdays, I don't know, all five people that watch us are going to feel confused because they see us in a different room. Anyway, all right. All right, reminds of a good starter, we have 7:40, continue public hearing, 35, 37A and 37B, Moore Lane, shared residential driveway special permit.
We, uh, we got a plan prepared by asset survey showing the driveways. Do you hope these, do they have coffees?
I have some already.
You do? We have little...
The only five of them. But, um... This shows the driveway locations and layout and the specs and the, there's a cross-section and...
Well, you went over and above, because all's we really asked for was just where it left the easement areas, right? That's all we really asked for when you left.
Yeah, yeah.
So this shows us always right up to the proposed buildings?
Right.
I think it's great. Anybody having any issues?
Do I?
I don't.
Does anybody in the audience have any issues coming out on a snowy night?
I have a question. Man tomorrow, please. My name is Ralph Stevens, I live at 28 Moore Lane. From my understanding, easement B was put in place for access for 35 Moore Lane to cross over the lot that holds a circle. That same easement is being used for two additional independent driveways on land that wasn't owned at the time the easement was put in place. Is that correct?
Not according to the attorney, or to the town council.
But it's correct, the land wasn't owned at the time the easement was put in place, correct?
The land, what land wasn't owned?
The lot...
Lots D and C.
What is known as parcel, it was known as parcel F at the time, and is now known as lot C and D.
So entitled past tense to, well, well, subdivided now into lots C and D, what is your contention?
That when easement B was put in place, that land was not owned by people that owned, that were party to the easement B sign. So, so what's happened is, that land was purchased, self-divided, and two independent driveways are putting, being put in using existing easement B, with no reviews or sign offs by anybody. Am I understanding that correct?
Well, easement B is, has always been there, correct?
Not, not always been.
How long has it been there, since 84?
Eighty-five, July of 85, and put in to get access to 35 Moore Lane.
Which is Cicati?
No, which is the Doug Dutcher Jr.'s house.
Okay, that's the, that's Bo's house now.
No.
No, that's the one beside Bo's house, that's...
It's the, the, people bought it, it's...
This is the lot right beside D.
On this...
The long skinny driveway right beside D, that's what you're talking about.
Correct.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Beside, not DC. The one beside D is Cicati's house.
So this is C, you're talking about over here?
I'm talking about way to the right.
Way to the right down here?
Not shown on this plan.
What's that?
Not shown on the plan?
Not shown on this plan.
So it's right here?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was the purpose of easement D, was to provide access across what is now the Smiths' land to get to 35 Moore Lane, which was owned by Doug Dutcher Jr. at the time.
Okay.
Okay, but does, does it say that only...
Now, at that time, when it was put in place, lots C and D were not owned by Doug Dutcher Jr. So fast forward, we're now adding two lots and putting in two new driveways, using an existing easement with no changes. Do I understand that correct?
That is correct.
Does that make any sense at all?
The only thing we have to go on is whether that easement B said that anybody could pass over it, and that's how I guess, that's how...
Anybody could pass over for anything?
Yeah, it's an easement, for access to property.
For access to 35 Moore Lane.
Well, it doesn't, it wasn't specific.
Okay, so, so you put, what, what you're going on record is saying that if you have an easement, you can unilaterally procure adjacent land and expand that easement with no restriction?
Only if, only if the easement says that.
No, it's, I mean, expand easement, easement, sorry, expanding.
Sure, you've got two new driveways.
The location of easement and the dimension of the easement is not shown.
What's that?
No, but we haven't, we haven't extended the bounds of the easement.
It's expanded to land that wasn't owned at the time...
Doesn't matter, the easement is the easement is the easement.
What connects the easement?
So we don't have to beat this horse like always down into six feet under. The attorneys have looked at it, the attorneys have approved it, I understand your frustration, but...
Well, it makes no sense, doesn't it?
Well, it doesn't matter who owns that land now or in the future. The easement is there.
So, so you're saying if I...
I'm saying the easement is in place. They own, whoever owns the land around it, that that easement has attachments to, they have the right to use that easement. It says to enter and leave with others for the, for the purpose of entering and leaving, regardless.
So if I'm...
Did your attorney tell you that this is the easiest way to come around this?
What's that?
Did your attorney stay, say that this easement is an issue?
What you're, oh, what you're saying doesn't make any sense.
It does not make any sense, but...
The attorneys say it do.
What we've gotten from, and nobody's, you know, waiting on the easement from our side. From their side, they say the easement is a, for lack of a better word, a universal easement that allows passage of anybody that has access to that easement.
Anybody to any piece of land?
Any abater.
Any abater, I guess is the best way to put it.
Any abater.
Obviously, you wouldn't use that easement if you couldn't go through that easement to your property, that'd make sense. Anybody that's in a abater needs to use that easement, that easement is...
So, so if they continued buying land up into Harvard, they could still use that easement?
Yeah.
Well, up until they went up against Route 2 or any other...
That's, that's the way, we were told from town, that that's the way that easement is read, is, is worded. If it was a specific easement only for the benefit of that one lot, then you'd have, you'd have a case.
We did restrict that, so we get further subdivisions all the time in the form eight from the sign.
Just for the... Just not.
No, no, on the, on those form eight plan, we had a note included which stated that there was no further subdivision to create...
Well, that was very nice. So, that being said, what are we doing now? Close the public hearing meeting?
We have to close the hearing and vote on whether or not we approve the shared driveway.
And make a motion to close the public hearing?
So, second?
Second.
Any favor? They've done everything, I guess we asked for the topos, we asked for a roadway, no one was interested in turnarounds or anything, it was just about the minimum. We passed the first driveway, it's there, it's on the plan, it shows where it's going to go, it shows the parking lots, it shows all the way up to the garages. You know, they've done, they've put it on a plan, so it does, is a plan of record, I don't have a problem with it. Does anyone else have any...
No problem. Make council accept.
Anyway, I'll entertain a motion to approve the shared driveway for the end of Moore Lane to service lots C and D. Second, can all those in favor?
Aye.
Done? Do you have to sign on this right now? No signatures of any sort?
You have eight, right?
Good copy, Mark, good copy. Okay. Yeah, we're all right, thank you.
Goodbye, don't come back. Eba.
Look, that's too fast.
Thank you, your pleasure.
Oh, they're going to be late, 8 o'clock, they're going to be late, aren't they?
Yeah.
Eight o'clock, it's going to be straight.
Where are we at now?
Near Park.
There, then, we've been informed they're going to be all the way. Do we have any other business we need to take care of?
I got a question for you.
Okay.
After all the ups and downs and ins and outs, and the multiple times I've asked the question, what is necessary to make the town sign bylaw, that everyone worked on for all those years, become reality? What do we need to do to make it go in front of town for the town meeting and get voted on, become...
We need to talk about enforcement of it, whether Roland has the time to do it, whether they're going to hire somebody else to do it.
I, I mean, I don't know.
You know, that's...
Procedurally, you don't need to do that, you just get it on the warrant.
We can put it on the warrant, it can go on the warrant as is, right now, it's been done, it's been hatched over.
It does take resources to enforce it.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that part, I'm just saying, what if you think you get it on the warrant, just...
If you guys don't mind, I spoke with, with Maron about this, since I'm the backer of this signed bylaw, and I'm going to meet with both Maron and Roland to see if we can work out some sort of an enforcement arrangement before this moves forward.
That would make sense to do.
It does, because...
And I'll report back to you when we've done that.
It's going to follow Roland's, it's going to follow Roland's lap.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense having a law you can't...
Now, it doesn't mean that, that it won't move forward, you know, at the end of the day, it doesn't mean that we won't move forward with it without an enforcement agreement with Roland, but at least we're going to exercise that, that option before we take the next step.
We have to take it out of zoning, too, we have to take it out of zoning and put it in.
Hopefully that's ready.
Yeah, that, and that's, that's one of the things that the signed bylaw committee, which I'm a member of, decided to do, because it would help clean up some of the inappropriate signs that are in town.
What happens if it goes on town warrant and discussion at town floor is that people see it not complete, they're not ready to move ahead with it. Do you want to then take it out of zoning after a successful adoption of it?
Why, are you going to change your vote on town floor as opposed to here?
I'm looking at the realities that it still has to go before town meeting, and it's up to them to decide, and whether they go for it or not has some sort of impact. I don't think you'd want to take it out of zoning and then have it, have it filled there.
Well, don't forget, Don, this was, there was a committee of about 12 people, and it represented lots of...
Right, but I think, I think that was a process question. I would recommend if you do move forward, you have two articles, the first being the article to add the new sign bylaw, the second would be to delete the existing sign bylaw from the zoning portion.
That's how that would...
You don't move forward with the second unless the first is...
Right, right, because you don't have to let time run.
Procedurally, that's how it will take place, yeah.
I mean, it's not predictable what town meeting...
Yeah, but if they, if they approve the first one, then obviously it makes sense to approve.
Right, the other way to do it is to time the new bylaw for a certain date, you know, July 1st or whatever, and then after that, we go to town meeting and we send current zoning.
To have a clean transition.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so what do we need, once again, we can have that put into effect?
Well, if you draft a bylaw, you draft the bylaw, we can vote on this board whether we back it or not, and then send it to the floor.
Yeah, the bylaw's already drafted.
Well, you have, it's drafted, and there were some more questions and...
Yeah.
All right, let's get that out, the open, get it going, all right? Richie?
Yes, I'll arrange to meet with Maron and Roland and report back at the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other wish lists over there, Mr. Scott?
I wish the people who were supposed to be here on time were here.
It's not 8 o'clock yet.
Son of a, Don? It's 7:40, are you hearing God?
Well, you were fast.
We just didn't, we didn't want to...
Hey, don't be bringing this. And I'm at, from a regular police standpoint. You used to be fast, I used to be fast, we were both fast in our day.
You want to see fast, I was slipping off a roof the other day, let me tell you, I came by.
Next meeting is when, do I have to...
March 12.
March 12, okay. Nothing much, we can't talk about anything else either.
Is there anything happening with master plan, is any discussions from that?
Have the master plan, have you guys met yet?
Master plan committee has not been convenient. The, the selectmen are still, still in the process of picking a few citizens that need to be on the board on that committee, and haven't, I guess no one's come up, well, not too many people have come forward, a few have.
It's the middle of the winter, too, I'm sure enough, the trees are getting out. Okay. Anything else, we can't talk about anything else?
Mike, I'd like to make a recommendation of when we have, when we have developments come, come in front of us, that we...
We have that discussion already, Richie.
You have?
Yes.
Okay.
It came out very well. Jerry had spoken of what a number would be, a fair number to assess to a number of lots coming in, and Maron is going to look at some other towns to see how large of a development would be in to the number of lots. 10% isn't always a concrete, granite number, you know? You can't say 10 lots, you have to have 10%, one, one house might not work for a 10 house subdivision. So Maron's going to look into some other things.
That's great.
A minimum threshold of how many lots we deal with, just like open space, the minimum amount of area we deal with, minimum amount of housing that we deal with to make a difference, you know?
And for some reason, it couldn't be done, it would be a natural allocation, and it's hard to know ahead of time, wonder if something's going to work completely. A good example is the Beadell, where it was complicated and that was not predictable. It's not ideal that, you know...
I know, but if we're trying to get affordable housing, it makes sense to have the units affordable. Town having the money doesn't make that unit affordable, so that sort of defeats the purpose.
Although it could go to the housing trust or something. It's not ideal.
We already have money going into the housing trust with the CPC and everything else like that, so it's not a question that we really need the money, we need the units, that's, that's the difference.
But we got a situation with Beadell that, that was a good compromise there.
At that, at that time, yes, it was, but now we've...
Nobody go in there.
What would happen if you threw a party and nobody came?
It would look like this.
Your scalp cookies are wrapped, isn't that exciting?
Yeah, it's...
Close session.
She brought in it.
Did you know they run close sessions?
Are they an executive, is that, huh? An executive session?
Those, is that right? I don't like saying executive wouldn't, but, you know...
They'll kick you out?
No, they shut up real quick. Hey, stand up, I got money riding on you. Don't go in there.
I told him I was guarding the door.
I can't check to see if my engineer's in there.
He's not in there.
Thank you.
Can we start without you, without him, since we're...
I'll start, I mean, we can start with him, let's put it over here. Our materials may be so tight.
What's being always bringing us?
Let's be in the way.
Now, this is real low tech, we don't even have any user there?
Oh, another engineers.
Somebody's got to be...
All right, we have a...
Once again, I'm related to the field, so if someone wishes for me to refuse...
We know you don't like them, so I don't think that's fine.
Are you speaking to them this week? All right, then you can stay on.
Okay. So, the engineers are not here right now, but I'm kind of going on with the Green International letter, as I'm sure you have. So this is the peer review of the project.
Luke is not going to be here tonight, he's going to wait until the applicants have a chance to respond to the comments before he comes in.
So essentially, J.J., Mark, the engineer, wanted to just continue to hear until the next meeting, but I thought it might be good to go and look through the letter quickly and see if there's anything substantive. As I read it, most of it appeared to be fixing the plan to show the things that he's talking about, and it did not look like substantive. There's a couple of places where maybe we need to talk. You want me to go through it, or do you want to, was he in there?
You're 24 minutes, sorry.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Are we in session?
Yeah, we have 8:40, no, 7:40, Richard. Do you want to keep all on time? I mean, at 8 o'clock, you can't, you're on 8 o'clock. I have more. We're close, we've got a couple more.
She's like taking out the doors?
Yes, I was, soon as I know.
Couldn't put the bed in the back. There's more people coming. See, you wait for eight, people show up. Have a seat. First come, first served. I have 8 o'clock, I think 8 o'clock, yeah, let's start. Yeah, 8 o'clock. According to TV time, it's 8 o'clock, I just got the...
So... Mr. Field is not here present tonight because he's upstairs at the zoning board. Once again, we've double booked our meetings, and he should be coming down before we finish. His daughter is here to represent for Fields. And thank you. And Mr. Marky should be here, but his initial statement today was that he might have just wanted to continue this till the next meeting anyway, because he wants to address all of Green's comments, but I thought it would be productive tonight to go through the Green comments and to make sure that anything substantive, we can maybe talk about how the board would like to address it. So I see things like the drainage calculations, he said he takes no exception to the applicant's claim that there isn't sufficient space to incorporate additional stormwater infiltration. And number two, just want something added to the plan, and I think most of it goes on that way, and more, but there are some different things added to the plan, not substantive things. I think some work has to be done on the walls, and the step off on the walls for the drive off from the Tedeschi's parking lot.
There's one other little issue that we should probably talk about, since we're talking about it. We're in an overlay, that's commercial space right there, that's commercially run. When you put our residential back there, it's going to revert back to residential space. I think the best way to approach that is, remember we were going to waive some office space in there? Think to capture the spirit of what the overlay district was intended to be, where it's going to be residential and some sort of office, you might want to put...
But you won't need to, Mark, because if the overlay is in existence, then whether it's residential, 100% residential, 100% commercial, or mixed or both, it'll always be that way.
What happens is, when it, when you have 100% residential component in a commercial district, it reverts back to residential.
In a normal situation, but this is an overlay.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
This isn't an overlay, this is actually a zone change.
It's, no, it's an overlay, so that zoning change will go back to residential, since it's a 100% residential component. All I'm suggesting is, rather than go to the ZBA and rather than ask our board for waiver, if you could put a little bit of a retail component in there.
So to respond to that, when we started this project and we came in for informal discussions, we did present to the board, and I think Mr. Crowe's addressing that, that the intent of the mixed-use overlay zoning district was to make sure there is mixed uses prevalent through the zoning district of the overlay, and not just building by building, and that's what we talked about. But when this came up and it shows as part of Mr. Green's comments, and I talked about it with the engineer, we are looking to see, one option is to put a laundry facility and small office either in a freestanding building, or on one of the ends of the building, or as an add-on, or in a, in a pocket corner of the building, and I think that'll satisfy your concern, because there needs to be... there needs to be laundry facility for the tenant base anyway, and that's a commercial aspect of this.
Does it require more parking? I'm just asking.
No, because it's only going to be for the
It's only for the tenants, so it won't require more parking. The question is, physically, can we get, you know, 400 square foot area, we can call it office and laundry.
Do you have a base, is there a basement in this?
I don't know if there's a basement.
I think there was going to be, that came up.
What, can we put it in the basement? I'm just trying, I want to
Is the water table high there?
Yep. It is.
I want to start with, have another waiver, because then that defeats the purpose of
I think we can get around the back with that one.
Either way works for me.
Okay.
And some of these are affordable, so you had mentioned earlier?
The applicant's proposing that they afford, that the town participate in making the affordable units possible. Because in the, in the, under the overlay bylaw, they don't have to be affordable. And to build three affordable units is pretty expensive. And the town gets the benefit of counting them all, if they keep rental in perpetuity and we have the affordable ones, the town gets the benefit of counting them all. So the applicant has requested some
If, if there are four affordabilitys, then the town can count them all, fourteen, right?
A quarter of them affordable. I don't know why I said three, I'm thinking twelve, but you're right.
So a four
CCA, is that the name of the
CCC.
CCA, we're going to wait and see if there if there are any funds to do.
Okay.
This is an engineer, not mine.
To address the engineer's comments, I didn't see anything that was insurmountable.
I, okay, I just wanted to know about that, and then if you give us a time at your next hearing, we'll be happy to let the next case go forward.
No, we want to keep you there, nothing going on for a little bit.
Keep it going.
Actually, we sit here and
Well, I have a break, can you get your legs, so I don't have to get to get all your hair after the meeting and
Make it Duncan's room. Maybe some chicken wings?
Yeah, no. If you want, you guys, go back and hold the greens, and when we get a nice clean, then at the end, we'll
Are these people behind?
They'll see at night.
Are you here for this, or?
No, not for that. Time, time's certain for continuing.
March twelfth, I'll try to put it to begin with 7:45, can I begin?
Yes, because I don't have a contract yet. We're not going to be on the same night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Oh geez.
Bumble.
Is 8:15 coming?
Yep. That's what was just here.
Comfy chairs. All right, the last time we were in here was Robert Walker Day.
For hearings, yeah. We did some joint trainings on 40B.
Fifteen great rooms, I guess, was the last. We were here, yeah. There was one joint.
Are they changing, or are we allowed to talk about this yet or no?
Not yet.
Wouldn't you give them to us at the end, because we're afraid we're not going to find them? All the stuff.
No, this is just a hearing notice.
Afraid if you give this to them, give them to us early, we're going to lose them.
Something's happened.
Why do you have it on, you can't just like turn it that way or something? Pass the stake straight ahead, get us all
Do cameos. Like, help our church go.
Look at the new Pepsi machine over there or something, you know, something good. Show them which smell we have, in case people don't know. Drink Dunkin' Donuts. There you go. All five people that are watching us are going to go to bed, dropping on.
Mark, did you talk about the point in their final phase?
I don't think they're in their final phase yet, the
Or their
They're in their second phase.
Grand opening set for spring? Did you talk about that?
No.
How much snow they got?
Montana, dear. None? Big Sky got any?
Point. We already proved the 120-room hotel, that's coming in, that's Oh, we get the Starbucks, Vitamin Shop, AT&T store. Tavern, Tavern in the Square, Marcus Palmer already, Chef Centric Seafood Restaurant. Move up in the point, also signed and proposed Marriott Courtyard is under construction. Final phase in the space in O'Neill Cinema, state-of-the-art entertainment complex. Limited spaces available as a fashion, sports, lifestyle, and entertainment resort. Point are signing on rapidly. Mark, I can't believe he says the Marcus pass could open the header schedule, but that's his PR. O'Neill State of the Odds. Hollywood Blockbusters from their luxurious all-level acronyms, while dining on home-made concessions from the nine-screen cinema specifically health specifically health, like menu. Okay, that's good. Wee retail, addition to Marcus Best and O'Neill Center, 120-minute bridges. Starbucks, we're on the lip, that is AT&T's, new retail store design. Vitamin Shop, Orange Leaf, offering ultimate dessert experiences. Orange Leaf is a self-service, choose your own topic, frozen treat destination. A perfect complement to the point's exceptional restaurants in O'Neill. Unique restaurants coming soon. Point throws a unique collection of locally owned and operated eateries. Through the leasing process, the lessons of lines of survey areas, 25,000 high-tech employees from leading-edge companies such as IBM, Red Hat, and Cisco. And one of the restaurants opening at the point are Tavern in the Square, a full-service restaurant that prides itself on being a scratch kitchen preparing all its inspired comfort foods, offering in-house daily specials. Marcus Palmer, Chef Centric Seafood Restaurant, become complete with Palmer's signature assortment of carefully selected wines. A restaurant industry veteran, Palmer built his reputation, hoping high in restaurants. For Michelin-rated Chief Chef, G. George Walter. Point fills a whole surprisingly strong market. Do you know the average median income within a 10-mile drive of a point is $97,649?
Say that again?
How can you live on that? It says.
Say that again?
Many retailers are surprised to mind that the point's demographics are better than than the established markets on the I-495 card consisting of a 2013 estimated household income within 10-mile drive of $97,649. From test. To learn more, visit thepoint495.com. Or contact D. Myers at dmeyssparamountpartners.com. That's it, coming soon. All right, well, at least we have good news of what's coming in there. All right. Can we get back to the business at hand? We have an 8:15. Oh yeah, you want to read it, we have the leaving notice. Mark, just put it there in front of you. This is it?
Yep.
That's a good one.
This is a public hearing for the setback special permit, 547 Great Road. The Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 12, 2015, at 8:15 PM, in room 103, Town Hall, 37 Shattuck Street, to consider the application for a special permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A in the Code of the Town of Littleton Zoning. Applications for an intensity of use scheduled special permit to allow a reduced building setback under section 173-31 of the Code of the Town of Littleton Zoning. Property location is 547 Great Road, assessor's map, R18, parcel 14. Owner and applicant is Georgiana Gagdon. Applicant is seeking approvals for structural improvement of 547 Great Road within 150-foot setback from the Great Road and Beaver Brook, as well as access for a seven-space gravel parking area off Beaver Brook Road. Application plans can be viewed at the Planning Board and Town Clerk's Office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time of place designated. Richard Crowley, clerk. What's that right there?
Oh, Jerry.
What's up?
Good evening, gentlemen, morning. Chris Ringwall, GPR for Gina Gagden. Changed from the site plan to a special permit, she was unable to attend this evening due to the conflict. As you may recall, I'm going to jump right to the second page here. We were here back in the spring. We had proposed some parking off of the existing driveway off of old Great Road, up in here. She's still evolving what the, how the place was going to be used. And as she got to know the property more and discovered this entrance off the back into an old gravel storage area that used to be off the backside. She decided that by coming in this way, as you're well aware, the front entry is kind of on the second level. And it has a farmer's porch across the front. And we had proposed a scissor lift, a scissor lift for handicap access off the front. It's out in the elements, scenario that was going to be difficult to deal with. So, and looking at the site and thinking more about the use of the property as a wellness facility and a place for meditation and retreats. She felt that it would be better to have a more rule act entrance and have the cars not right up in front of the building, or a little bit away from the building. And then this provided for a nice pathway in following with the topography of the property. And then come into the back of the building, make that the front entrance. All is well and good from that standpoint. We take the seven parking places that we had proposed in the front. There's three right in front of the existing garage that would remain for employees. And then proposing seven spaces out back, in the area out back. Taking them from where we had them in the front, flipping them to the back. There's an existing drive that comes in, we're kind of widening it so that it's 16 feet wide at the entrance, so that if you're coming out, Richard, and I'm coming in, we have space. And then narrowing it down to a little bit wider than it is now, to a 12-foot, and then back again to 16 around the corner. Again, so that if I'm coming out and Richard's driving in, we can see each other and one another can wait, but 12 feet's out of the space for most vehicles to pass by each other. And then on in to the, to the parking spaces. This whole area is currently gravel now, it'd be recreated and made so that it worked appropriately. And then we wish to finish it off with wrap, recycled asphalt product. Essentially, when you see when they've been grinding up all the highways around us, and they've had these huge piles of ground-up asphalt on the clover leaves, when you take that and you roll it out in the summer, it gets packed right in and it works really well. It's, doesn't have the appearance of a paved, it looks more like a gravel surface, a little bit darker. But it, it doesn't erode like gravel does, and it does let some water through. But, you know, we've still considered it in our drainage clogs as an impervious surface. I have met with I forget what his rank is now, but with Keith Dunn, the fire department. And he was concerned that we provide a emergency turnaround area for the ambulance, because his fear was that, you know, all the spaces, namely the handicap spaces, would be filled when he would need one for the ambulance, so we provided this handicap, this turnaround space for emergency vehicles. Meeting his specs and at the location he and I discussed. Into, so that they come in through in the backside here, because this would be the handicap access and nice ramp up, they wouldn't have to deal with stairs with a, with a stretcher. There's, to do this, to come in the back, they've proposed the deck off the back of the building. And they've also proposed this dark rectangle that you see right in here, of expanding the building out. I think it's about five feet within this elk hole. That deck and that expansion of the building are within 150 feet from the setback of the road, which is this dashed line right here. All the rest of this existing building here, corner is about 80-foot back from that setback. 80-foot is the setback for the zone, but because residential is across the street, it jumps to 150 feet. Because this was a residence in the past, even though it had in-home, in-home business. It, it didn't have, it wasn't a problem, but I have had discussions with Roland. And we felt that the best approach would be to come and ask this board for the special permit that's allowed via the bylaw to allow for this addition in this entrance to happen off of the side of, of the building. So that's the reason for the special permit, because we are adding to an existing structure, which is within the setback. But it's not a previous non-conforming structure, because as a residence, it was conforming. As a commercial, as we made the change in use, which we've already done previously at the previous meeting, but we weren't changing the building. Other than the scissor lift, which the scissor lift itself is exempt from the setbacks because it's for handicap access. Technically, we can make that argument on this, but Roland and I in discussion felt it was best that we come forward and, and do this approach. So that takes, that's what we're going to do for the parking, exchanging the parking from here to here. The handicap access and the deck and this expansion are part of the special permit. As we had done before, down along the southern corner of the lot, we had proposed a little berm, and before we had to pull them back up in here. And we had a stone filter strip along the edge of the driveway, which we still have here. We've added another one here. Stone filter strip is one of the low-impact development, BMV's put in the Littleton Stormwater Management Guidelines and in the Mass Stormwater Management Guidelines. And then in the overland flow across, and because this water is going to then actually cut across pavement again, we technically need to have another one. And then it comes across and it's overland flow, and then this berm, we extended a little bit. And this area in here, this berm is, I think, like at most a foot high down here. And with the depression in the area that's behind it, this area in through here will retain all the stormwater that's necessary to meet where it cuts for pre versus post development. And we're actually wind up with less impervious area than we had the first time around. First time around, we hadn't even considered back here, but then when we got back here, because we didn't even go back up into here, which was just dealing with this corner. We found this gravel area, and as we've always done this gravel area and as we've always done in Littleton, gravel surfaces are considered impervious surfaces, so taking that into consideration and part of this area that is that we're going to be loning and seeding and dressing up. So we're reducing the footprint of the gravel surfaces and impervious spaces and then dealing with the drainage area down and up. That's basically it in a nutshell. As in the first presentation, um, we have the detail for the vegetated strip and how that works and then the buffer area, um, handicap access sign, um, and the design for the driveway cross-section, um, and the stone diagram. Any questions?
Is someone going to live in the house?
They are. They do have a apartment in there. They are planning for one of the practitioners to live there.
Where's parking for the residence? So you're going to keep part of the...
Yeah, we're keeping the three that are in the front.
Okay.
But that parking space doubles for that employee as well because...
Hold up any questions?
No, I'd like to hear if there's any, any...
Can I ask him, Richard? Anybody here in the audience have any questions or concerns? Name, please, to Ma. Yes, sir, you're here first.
Yes, I have one question.
Name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Terrell, um, of Old Great Road. Was a ramp not considered? I mean, you mentioned the original plan with parking in the front and a lift. Why not just a handicap ramp?
There's a substantial grade change between, if, if you're familiar with the site, between the driveway area, even from this parking area up to the, the front door level. Um, and then the, the deck itself, the porch itself is recessed below the front entry to the building as they typically are. So that would have to have been reworked also. The steps coming in here from this side is substantial steps up. So there's quite a change in grade, but more than, than that, she wanted to have it so that the space around the building wasn't encumbered with asphalt and the parking and the cars, wanted to have it more of a rural atmosphere.
And what would be the frequency of cars coming in and out of that gravel area?
I would say fairly minimal, and we're only having seven spaces. Um, it's, uh, be set up as a, um, as a wellness area, meditation, uh, there's a brainwave function that occurs in there, so I'd say fairly minimal. That's part of why we, you know, we've kept this driveway very minimal in construction and in width to, um, because there isn't a need for a lot of vehicle traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
Karen Terrell, um, what is the expect, what is the hours of operation for this venture, days of the week?
I'm, I'm assuming it's Monday through Friday and, um, you know, during normal business hours, uh, where it is for wellness and counseling, it may go into the evening a little bit. I'm not certain.
When, I mean, when would that, is that something that needs to be addressed before?
Normal business hours, maybe.
Not with, I mean, if it's longer than that?
It's, it's commercial, it's commercially zoned property. It's no different than the businesses that are right beside it down the street.
Okay, so...
It could run later.
It could, it could run till ten o'clock at night. I mean, like...
But it's low impact.
Yeah, I really don't think that would be the case. I don't know if you've ever, you know, gone to a therapist or anything. It's usually kind of limited hours, you know, like nine to six or seven.
I happen to live across the street, so I'm just wondering how much activity would be going, you know, going on at that location, you know?
Yeah.
We think, you know?
You can, you can always go to the building department and ask Roland, see if he can force that kind of stuff. We just, we need a zone.
But it's... But it's, it's commercial, I mean, ten o'clock, I think, is our normal, eight to ten o'clock is our normal business hours for, unless you get, um, an extension of time, but I would say that's probably what's going to...
Yeah, I'd be surprised if it was later than that.
Yeah.
Now, you're saying you're proposing seven parking spaces. Is there going to be something? I, I was reading like in the codes or something, like after seven parking spaces, there were more regulations when it came to barriers to protect, you know, the residents from the, the commercial property.
Okay.
What type, what type of, like, you know, protection is there from the, from the residents?
Very good question.
The accessibility of all the parking and, you know, I mean, I know it's only seven spaces, but there's seven more than what we're used to at this point.
Right. And, and that wasn't a reason for stopping there was we had proposed seven more previously out front and we just were moving them to the back, so we weren't going with seven versus eight or nine to beat any jump. Um, we actually are proposing a, a, a light paved surface in here. To address your question of screening, this probably has more screening here than where we had it out front because out front it was just right here in the open lawn area and then it is right to the road. So what happens here, I don't know if it's been down in the back in here, but there is a, um, a boulder retaining wall, um, that happens in here. So the grade change between here and here is, let me just take a look at some numbers so I make sure I get it right, two point six. Okay, so it's, um, six foot change in grade between here and here by this wall. And then from here up to the road is another ten feet. So these cars that are parked down here are basically sixteen feet lower than the road. The area between here and here, which is a healthy distance, make sure I get the right scale, twenty scale, between here and here, forty, eighty feet. There's eighty feet of wooded vegetation in between the two spaces. So all this wooded area is remaining there. Nothing is proposed to be cut down in, in these trees or anything. Um, this driveway, regrading is proposed to stay right tight along the edge here so that, we've taken a look through here, there's very minimal trees that come down in this area, couple of little ones that, there's like one that's down already to cross the driveway and came down in the storm. That would come out, that's right in this area. But you'll have an eighty foot buffer of vegetation through here and then sixteen feet in grade change. So you won't, we won't even see it.
Currently, the perimeter against Beaver Brook is tree-lined. Is that going to stay also?
Yes. That's what I'm saying, this, this whole, this whole thing is all, well, actually all of this, this is all trees. This is kind of some overgrowth in here. This was a garden and lawn and this is kind of overgrowth. That may get pushed back into here, but this is all trees.
By keeping it at seven spaces, it also allows them to keep it like a driveway. If they went more than, as you, as you pointed out, if they went to more than seven, it would have to be paved, would have to look at a wider road where you'd have to look at drainage and everything else. By keeping it seven, they can put gravel down, they don't have to pave it, they can keep it, or as a rural driveway, I think their retention is try to keep it, to minimize the impact to that, to that area. Yes, ma'am?
I don't think, I think the initial, um, plan to have them out front, it would impact the neighborhood less. I think the, the entrance to Beaver Brook impacts the neighborhood more for a couple of reasons. Number one, you're saying that it's going to maybe run eight o'clock, ten o'clock, whatever, and these people are coming for holistic help. Means you're going to have to have lighting, okay? So now they're going to be staring across at lighting in the parking lot or the driveway or whatever. If it was back the way you initially had it, there's really nobody across the street from them. There's the whole highway and then the way over, you might get another residence, okay? But you've got the one nineteen in between you. But the way it is, the way you switched it now, it's right across from the Sullivan's, the Terrell's, you know? So, so the initial way you had it was less impact on the neighborhood. The other thing is, it's, it's, the, that part of Old Great Road, all of the parking on that part of Old Great Road should be theirs. It's a wide street on both sides. There's no other residents there. So not only would they have the seven parking spaces in front of the commercial establishment, but they would have parking on the street because it, it goes nowhere, that end of the street.
The state owns it.
Yeah, the state owns it, but nobody, it wouldn't affect anybody.
But it's...
The state owns it.
It's not, it's not really allowed. Their access is really where it is now. That's, when they abandoned Old Great Road, their access was on Beaver Brook Road.
But you probably don't live on Beaver Brook or on Old Great. And I live on Old Great. I'm seventeen on Great and in the morning, okay? My husband tries to get up to the emergency room because he's a physician there, you can't do it because they back up way past the Saul's house. What number is this Saul? It's past you.
But that's not going to...
It, it will because if, when they come in and they cut to Old Great Road, that's much better than going up.
You've got a commercial building right next to it that has, what, two hundred parking spaces in it?
Yeah, but we can't, she can't, uh, uh, see that. You're talking about vegetation, most of it's brush across the street.
This, this is the driveway to the commercial place right next door. And this is our proposed driveway. They're right, pretty much right adjacent to it.
Are you proposing lighting or just low-level lighting for the walkway?
We have low-level lighting right in here for the walkway, a couple of low-level lights for the, uh, the parking area. Uh, I think we have them, they're post-lantern, you know, like you would have in a residential site. Uh, and one down here at the corner and one out the road.
And again, impact to the neighborhood would be less if they had it the way they did it initially.
But they, but both roads enter onto Beaver Brook.
Beaver Brook is, is a mess. I, I get that, okay? I get that, all right? It, it is in the morning. You try it.
Well, Great Road is not any better either, though. It's much worse than Great Road.
When Beaver Brook comes into one nineteen, on a bad day, they, they kiss, people without four-wheel drive sometimes can't even get up. Then they stop backing up to one nineteen. It's horrific.
No, I know. I live at five forty-eight Great Road.
Yes.
I know what that's all about, yes.
So, but I agree that this is not going to go and change that, but what I'm saying is one more entrance exit is going to exacerbate an already existing problem.
The seven cars have to get to somewhere where they went down, Old Great Road and went down that driveway.
If they go off of Old Great Road, it's better.
Old Great Road enters on Beaver Brook as well.
And it's also where everybody queues up from the parking because they can't get onto one nineteen. It's better to put it further up the road so that they don't have to cut through the queue in the morning if somebody was coming there at seven thirty in the morning. It's a better location. It's a safer location and it's, and it's no different than the driveway that's...
I don't see it that way because of the lighting. I think that affects the, the people that are directly across the street.
It's, they're kind of be no different than somebody who lived there put residential lighting up on their lawn. They're not putting, they're not putting...
Well, it is a commercial establishment. You said that a couple minutes ago.
It is a commercial.
And commercials establishment, they typically put up commercial light.
They're putting up...
No, no, we're not. We're putting up low...
Go ahead.
We, we have a, and it's part of the application package, we're using a lantern-style lamp. Um, it'll be cut off and shielded to the road, um, into the budding properties, but it's, it's a residential lantern-style lamp, like you see the, on a post at the end of people's driveways. And that's exactly what we're going to put right here, 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 and here.
So, and you'll be plowing that, right? Because you have to, you, yeah. So I'm just saying it's, it'll, and, and the other thing is, you mentioned ambulances, but ambulances typically don't go to this establishment, do they? It would be extraordinary.
If there's one, it's called. We have to make certain that there's adequate space for them to have space to turn around.
Oh, no, I get that, but it, it's not like a skilled nursing facility where you're going to expect an ambulance probably once a week, right? It's an extraordinary thing.
That's correct.
See, the fire services reviews everything and they provide comments and all the comments was, they were going to, you know, we need, we need to get in there with an ambulance who want to be...
Yeah.
And it says, it goes to this, those kinds of rules apply to even houses.
Oh, yeah. But I, I still think it's less impact to the neighborhood if it's off of Old Great Road. And I live on Old Great Road, but that other side than off of Beaver Brook.
If, how can, I'm missing something here because how can, um, if you're going to have seven cars come in off of Beaver Brook from the left side of that property and you're going to have seven cars come in off the right side of that property, how can there be that much of a difference?
Well, one is like, typically, I'm guessing, most of these people would probably come via one nineteen. Is that a safe position or not?
Yeah, it's safe.
So then they come off one nineteen and they're basically a small jaunt and right, right, and they're off of the whole quagmire that's the rest of Beaver Brook.
But they have to cut through the queue.
I don't think this is a debate for us. I mean, if you have these suggestions, you should give it to the, to the property owner and work it out with her. We're here to approve the plan. If it's, if, if the applicant package meets our bylaws, that's where we're here to debate.
So, so why, why did they bother in giving us notices to come? I thought that was the idea, is to in, to ask for, um, input from the neighbors.
Jerry, this is, this is about input because we can, we can require all kinds of screening. We can require less lights and, and more lights. There's, there's things that we can require or prohibit.
Like what?
Mr. Jerry?
You know the bylaws.
I do. That's why I'm asking you. What, what would you suggest?
I'm just telling you that the lady has a, has a right to be here and she has a right to comment.
I didn't question that.
And, and we have a right to...
No, I didn't, I didn't question that. I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you.
You did question.
So what's the resolution?
You said this is something that she doesn't, you know, that doesn't come before this board. This is exactly what comes before this board.
What's your resolution? You can ask him to change his plan? You want him to go back and re-...
I'm not suggesting a resolution, Jerry. I'm just suggesting that we let the lady talk.
We have let her talk.
She's talking.
Well, you, you, you just got...
All right, let's get, let's move on.
Place for her...
That's good. First of all, we have no right to make them come down Old Great Road. Great, Old Great Road is abandoned. It's state highway. They're well within their right to come where they are. I personally think it's a safer way in because you're not going to have to cut across the traffic that's going to queue up coming onto one nineteen. I think the entrance is fine. It's right next to the other one that goes into a commercial establishment right there. It is zone commercial. They've done everything they can to screen it from the neighbors. I don't have a problem with it. Anybody else on the board have any issues with it?
No.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Want to put they gun to screen it from the neighborhood again?
You've got eighty feet of natural vegetation in there. They're putting seven, they're putting seven parking spaces in. They could do that for their own house.
Question, please?
Go ahead.
Would it be, uh, so just, could you put maybe a few trees along Beaver Brook Road, some vegetation that would grow?
We would have to cut down trees to add trees because...
What I'm asking is, is the trees that are there, what size are they now? Are they three, four, five inches, ten feet tall, thirty feet tall? They do presently provide some screening?
I would say they're in the forty-plus foot tall range.
Okay, well, then there is a decent amount of vegetation shielding them presently.
Yeah, they, they vary in size between several inches to probably ten to twelve inches.
It's typically white pine, so it's a big trunk that goes up and then off the top, you get the branches.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a fair amount of hardwood in there.
I like where the driveway comes out where you have it now because if you have the two old great roads coming out within seventy-five feet of one nineteen, then you're fighting, everyone's fighting at once to get out. At least up there, they have a chance to, another couple hundred feet worth of area to, to get out, get onto, onto Great Road or onto Beaver Brook Road and then onto Great Road. I like where it is myself also. I don't see a problem with it. If it needs to be motion made, let me know.
Still hearing tests. Could you mention your name, though, for the minutes?
Seventeen Set Steadman, seventeen Old Great Road.
You're putting residential lighting up. No different than if it was the house. I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. So you're not asking for a commercial, but even though it is commercial, you're putting residential. I don't see a problem with it. I think, I don't think you're going to notice the lights. It's going to be no different than a driveway.
No, that's one hundred percent correct. And if I can address this lady's question, the reason you got notices, um, the site plan gets advertised in the paper. The site plan end of it, the special permit was to allow for them to build in this area here, which is the setback. So that's what you got the notice for, but you're always welcome to come to the hearings by the notice of the paper.
supportive, any other questions?
Mark, you have another question?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask you about the, um, the lighting. What, is there a restriction? I mean, at this point, what is your plan for the lighting?
It's a, um, it's a lantern. Looks, it's, it looks like a, you know, the basic square, uh, lantern with the four panels of glass that come down and then a little...
Cap on it.
Cap on the top of the thing. And then we'll have smoked glass in it so that you don't see, uh, the ball and from the road. So it'd be smoke glass on the roadside of the thing. And down in here, they wouldn't, there'd probably be smoke glass on the back sides here because there's no sense in shedding light in this direction. We just want to light up the parking area and the walkpath.
So how tall would that be?
Uh, probably about seven feet, eight feet, you know? Just like if it was at the end of your driveway, six to seven... Just like if it was at the end of your driveway, six to seven feet.
Now, how about signage?
Uh, we have a proposed sign right here, right with the, the light so that the lights, the little residential lights illuminating the sign is probably just gonna be like a street sign. Maybe you have the name of the place. I'm not sure. Might just have the number.
Can you show us where the lights would be?
Yeah, right here. One right here.
Every eight feet or what?
Nope. One right here, one all the way down here at the corner, which is eleven feet lower in grade than here. So you probably won't even see that light. It'd be down lower. And then one, two, three, right here around the parking lot. One at the corner as you come in and then two right here in the middle of the, the parking spaces. And then there's, uh, two on the corner of the walkway. These will be low level lighting so that as you're coming down the walk in the evening time, you'd be lit up like bollards probably.
Will the entryway be lit up also?
Um, I'm sure there'll be a, a light at the door, you know, just, just standard residential light at the door.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Jennifer, at five forty-eight Gray Road. Is there going to be any type, since it is a commercial zone, any type of sign, um, commercial, you know, advertising on the side of Gray Road?
Um, there's a possibility. Um, we have shown where to go on here. Uh, right here, there's an existing, uh, very large, uh, for sale sign. Uh, where, where the applicant wants to speak to the state about possibly putting a identification sign in that location. But again, be a very small sign compared to what's there now, just addressing the name of the place or the street number.
Okay, my ma'am.
Are they going to, is, um, since it is a state road, are they going to lower the speed limit through this area? Because now with all of the commercial zoning on that whole area coming into the lights and et cetera, I mean, people fly by. I realize it's forty-five miles an hour, but, um, you know, during rush hour traffic it isn't, but...
We've not made any promotion for that one way or the other.
No, that's something that doesn't come before our board.
So stay out of there because not much we can do about it. Yes, ma'am.
So the special permit basically is for, the condition to do that addition on the side because it doesn't qualify within one hundred and fifty feet setback. But the building itself isn't setback one hundred and fifty. So you have no recourse except to get a special permit to do it.
Well, there's several different approaches that we're gonna take. This is the most straightforward and, and visually apparent to the public approach is to come in and, and notify the butters as we have and for the planning board for a special permit hearing, um, to make a, a like similar structure. It's a, you know, this, this structure could be bulldozed down and a commercial structure could be built. The applicant has proposed to maintain the farmhouse structure that's there and to, um, you know, to dress it up in a similar residential fashion looking appearance. So a deck entrance and building out this portion here, which you won't even see because it's within the alcove between the, the main portion of the house and the barn garage portion of the house. You know, we're basically just taking that wall and pulling it forward a little bit so that they have airlock and hall space within the footprint of the building.
Anyone else?
Question before, perhaps you would know, is, is the need historical significance associated here?
Well, it's the old, there used to be a jail, yeah, it used to be a jail in there and stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, I found out in the process of this whole thing, two owners back had the jail removed unfortunately. And then there were a lot of public safety people down there. They were really bummed out about that because it was the original jail cell for time.
Well, I, I ask in terms of, is there any significance in terms of, or any requirement that they maintain the house of...
No, it's not listed.
It's not listed, not listed, please.
And it's, they're basically, they're keeping the character of the house, you know, the...
They are. Who knows what the next people will do?
Yep. I mean, that's kind of the reason they probably wanna see something successful. You have no idea how many people have come before us and all the, what facilities out. A restaurant knocked the building down for a restaurant. They had a, we had a tenants' facility that wanted to come in there and one time came before us informally. We've had a lot of interest on that road for basically restaurants and commercial development there. It is own, a few pieces left in the town that is own commercial. Happy that Walmart is, I mean, not Walmart, Walgreens or somebody like that didn't try to take that corner and put something like that in it. This is the most low impact.
I thought it was the overlay. We went, we went to the town. I thought the, the overlay protected anything of that, you know, that extent happening. It would have to happen on the other side of that wall, huh?
That's correct. You're, you're absolutely...
It's still commercial though.
But you're not gonna have a, a Walmart, they'll...
No, no, no. It's still, retail would have been, they would have had to come for a special permit for retail, but...
Right. So, I mean, I guess it's office.
You could have had an office building in there. You could have had, you could have had a restaurant, you know? They could have, they could have hired a restaurant in there. Anyway, I think it's nice that they're maintaining the building and, and trying to keep the character as much as they can. Does Board have any other questions?
Just observation seems to be rather low, low impact. Probably a volume of cars coming and going.
That's seven cars, not a lot. Yes, one more ask question.
By passing this special, you know, getting this special permit to do this, does that open up, you know, the restrictions on how far you have to set back for any other development within that area?
No, none of them.
No.
They were over the grandfather because the building's there before, before the zoning went in, before the one hundred and fifty foot setback went in.
Every time you build a new structure, you have, it's, it's a brand new, uh, case.
So if they knocked the building down, they'd have to adhere to it. But since they're using the existing building, to be quite honest, they're being more than forthright with us to go this route. They could have, they could have gone to the ZBA, not a variance, just to put that little roof on it and not even come before us. And they wouldn't, wouldn't they need a special permit to change the driveway? They could have done that with a very easy site plan. And so at least they're, you know, letting everybody know what their intentions are.
Cause the driver was existing.
Yeah.
That driver was existing.
Yes, he may go, and go down now. You can't drive down now because there's a tree across it, but you can clearly walk it.
I walk, I walk on the street. I did read somewhere that there was provision for additional parking on Old Gray Road.
That's correct. In the, in the first filing,
On the side of the road.
In the very first filing, we asked for that and, and here, if necessary, to, to use the side of the road. The, the full business plan for the property is, is, is still materializing. You know, this is what she knows she's gonna do. If we need to use more parking, most likely we'll be back for the board at some point. But right now, we believe this is all that we need.
If it's a state road, don't you count, go to the state?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can't remove the parking lot on that, on that road. We can let them have their left with the state, but it's not something we can control.
You know, all, all things considered, what could have gone there and having this be there is probably a good thing for the town.
It is. It's lesser impact. That's what they're like, seven, seven parking spaces.
Basically, compared to the possibilities.
Anyway, any other questions? Do you Board have any other questions?
No, I see, um...
I'd like to entertain most of the, close the hearing and vote on the special permit.
A second.
So moved, second. On favor?
Aye.
I want to entertain most to approve the special permit for the, for the alteration to the building less than a hundred and fifty feet from the, um, change in zoning, in zoning.
From Gray Road.
Less than a hundred and fifty, proper...
Right, there's a little short draft decision in here, Pat.
Yes, I'll make the go look for it.
It gives a rationale.
All right, setback special permit for Farmwell Center. Propose this, I'm only interested surrounding and I can't do, you know, use of college material landscape treatment is a public interest benefit of the decreased setback notably, notably that it keeps the character of the building and tries to keep it best spot while making it handicapped accessible. I think that's about it. That's the only reason we're needing the seven parking spaces. Uh, makes for even better access to the front of the building. Uh, keep on keeping with the, um, residential role major of the project. Board have any other finding for any other? I want to entertain most to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you, do you want to say, or do you like the same?
I want to entertain most to approve the site plan for the seven spaces to be moved from the back of the building to the side of the building.
So moved.
Coming off of, off of Beaver Brook Road instead of Gray Road?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for coming to the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, no, gotta find the... It's okay, uh, three thirty, public hearing, four forty-eight King Street. Mixed use special permit out of one bedroom apartment to an existing commercial retail space. Anybody here have?
Go ahead. Wait. Yeah, go ahead. It's a public hearing for mixed use special permit, four forty-eight King Street. Town of Wilton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February twelfth, eight thirty P M. Room one oh three of Town Hall, thirty-seven Shattuck Street. Consider the, an application for a special permit pursuant to M G L, chapter forty-eight in the code of Town of Wilton zoning. Application is for a mixed use in the Village Common Business District. Special permit to allow construction of a single residential unit at an existing building at four forty-eight King Street under sections one seventy-three dash one sixty-four to one seventy-three dash one sixty-six. Mixed use of the Town of Wilton zoning by law. Location is four forty-eight King Street, assessors map U nine, parcel twenty-two. Owner and applicant, Mary and Jim Reagan. The applicant proposed to add a one bedroom apartment within the existing commercial building at four forty-eight King Street, located within the Village Common Business District. Application and plans can be viewed at the planning board and town clerk's office during your business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard under the post and it should appear at the time and place designated.
I've never done this.
You're here because you wanna put a kitchen on the upstairs. This is the old, the old time is now, it's Dana Harty's old office. Um, across the street from the post office.
Little wood, wood shingles building.
Yep, the one right next to, um, Fred, right next to Fred Fields, um, Matt Fields, real estate office and right beside, um, two houses over from the Shell Station.
Exactly.
Right.
You have a kitchen business.
We have a kitchen business on, on the first floor.
Um, just a little history since, um, back fifteen, twenty years ago, there was always an apartment up above there. And the reason I know that is... In that second floor because, um, one of the people that I worked with used to live up there. And I used to pick them up to go to work. I'm surprised it was abandoned. I would assume it was abandoned when...
This is going on the first floor, correct?
We're not proposing it on the second floor at this time. We're going to use the main house.
Okay, so you're talking in the back.
We're talking the, um, the little area, what probably used to be a garage.
In the back, right, that was, actually, I... Didn't Dana have a kitchen back there, I think, when...
There's a kitchenette there and then there's also a bathroom there. Existing right now, we're just proposing it, just turning it into a full bath.
Right, you're proposing to put a living space in there, resident part of your office. And I think Dana had it as a kitchen slash bathroom slash... But it used to be upstairs, so you're not, there's nothing upstairs now. It used to be a whole, whole apartment upstairs.
Really?
Anyway, so it's all, it's more than, it was built before the fifties. So it's allowed by, you could get a special permit to do that through the Z B A or you could come to this board with our new overlay district and ask for a residential component in a commercial building and that's what you do. Does the Board have any problem with putting a small little apartment next to a commercial to the overlay? Is there any...
I think it's, it meets the intent of the overlay perfectly. I think that's a great use.
Any other question?
Bringing residents back into the center of town is a, is the goal that we were trying to achieve. You're hitting the bullseye.
Thank you. We're hoping it's a positive.
Yeah.
For the size of it, which means the rent would be, uh, on a lower side.
That's right.
Would that fall into affordable?
It's gotta be deep restricted in order to be affordable.
Well, if they're willing to deep restrict it and then they have to, every time they turns over, they would have to advertise through the state, which is very expensive.
I don't, I, it's not our intention to do something like that.
I'm just trying to plant the seed, okay?
Thank you, though. It's, it's not our...
Okay.
So you're gonna get all the money you can get for it, right? You'll put a very good kitchen in there, I trust.
We're, we're hoping to. Or are we applying out on board?
And, and the audience have any questions? You remember this Dana's office, right?
What's that?
Remember this Dana Harty's office?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little...
I don't have a problem.
I have a problem. I want most to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Totally, thank you.
You're awesome.
Thank you.
Grab the cash and dash.
Thanks.
Good work. If you can think of any more places downtown that can take an apartment, please bring him back.
Are we back on time now or...
We're, we're fine with it.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, eight forty-five, Kenby. Eight forty-five informal discussion, Mary Brown Property, Residential Development. And Jeff Rem.
Hello, everyone.
Jeff, haven't seen you around for a while.
This is very informal if I can, because we're just discussing.
No.
Just me.
Is that, can we say no right off the bat?
I can say no. If you want to spread them, just pass it down.
This is because of power.
I don't even have a board, so informal. Thought you guys were gonna meet. I didn't know you were meeting here. Uh, I'll orient you. This is Harvard Road comes up and joins up with Tehachawon right here. It's a couple blocks that is built right at the corner.
We, we have, maybe if it's the, uh, the TV camera there. Yeah, so the TV camera.
We have a board, so we can think of people. So, uh, this is the Mary Brown property. I got involved because, uh, a guy named David Lowery, who was a fairly big time developer in the Southern California area for forty years, was best friends with Stephen Brown when they grew up in Wilton together. And Stephen Brown is Mary Brown's son. So he remembers coming to the house. He's a host here, uh, among six. Uh, when he was a kid and after, David, David Lowery was a developer in Southern California. And Stephen Brown went off to, with his other brother, to Oregon. So they're not around here anymore. David Lowery, he now lives in Duxbury. And so Stephen asked him to look into this land to see what could be done with it. So that's how David got involved and that's how I got involved. So the two of them are in Oregon. I think there's another brother in the Midwest somewhere. And that's one more for the family. They have this land. There's a house on it, the Mary Brown's house. She's still alive, but she's in a, Dave is in a care center or something. So they're just starting ideas to think about, what's a development? We're throwing all kinds of plans at them. This is essentially the plan that they, they wanna go with. So before we started doing anything, we wanted to show it to you. I told them it's a good idea. It worked with us before to show your plans at the early stage. Uh, have comments and, and we'll take it back and go for it. So there, oh, there's another thing too. There's a piece of land across the street which we call existing want be. There's also a piece of land in the middle of the town forest that they own, four and a half acres.
Really?
Yeah. And you have no access to it. Uh, but they wanna talk to you about that as well because I think you may, as a town, may have an interest in acquiring that. And that, that should be talked about because they're looking at dealing with all the, the land of their estate. Uh, we talked a little bit about in the town about possibly donating it or somehow getting that piece as part of the town forest, so...
You mean where it already is?
It already is surrounded by the town forest.
There's nothing they can do with it.
There's nothing they can do with it. I just wanna know that it's time.[1789.08] I just want to know that it's time, it would be a good time to do something with it, rather than just keep letting it hang there, so.
The process, the recruitment, to see if this might be, it's a long process.
That would be sort of separate from this. I should also tell you, because David wants me to tell you, he lived in a house when he was growing up that was torn down by Route 195. His father was an artist. And he drew three paintings that he donated, and David framed and donated to the town as part of the 300th anniversary celebration. I don't know if they're in Town Hall.
Yeah, they are.
They are in Town Hall. So that was, that's David Lowery. That's David Lowery's father, I'm sorry. And one of those paintings that is no longer there anymore, that was just how he grew up. It's kind of cool. I mean, there's history here. And he, he and I talk all the time, it's great to hear stuff that goes back sixty years and stuff. So back to this plan. So we've looked at different scenarios. I looked at your senior residential ordinance, I've looked at open space, looked at different things. And I gotta tell you, this is the plan that we think is the best one. Obviously, the first thing is, why don't you connect Tehatawon to Howard Wood? And we can talk about that a little bit, but this plan doesn't do that. So we have an A and R lot, that existing lot here, an A and R lot here, Lot 12. It's just completely separated because of this wetland. The wetland was an issue that, when I walked the site a couple times, I kind of got lost myself. I didn't know where the wetland was, where the limits were. So I convinced them to hire botanist. So they hired a botanist who actually flagged this, used GPS. These are real, the purple line is a real wetland line. Because I didn't want to have a cartoon, and then make all these arrangements and plans, and they have to change them all when we get the real wetland. There is a river, a perennial stream, that kind of has a dash line right here. So two hundred feet away from that stream is important. And you see, we're just barely touching the outer limits for that detention base in our lot 11. So that's not going to be an issue.
Is that your new FEMA boundary?
Well, it's the riverfront.
It's the FEMA, FEMA rules.
FEMA would be inside the, inside the wetland.
No, FEMA, we, the whole state, yeah, FEMA redid the map for the state.
Yep. FEMA will be inside this all of it.
It'll be for the hundred-year storm.
Right, but we need, for the rivers, we need to have two hundred feet, which is a lot further, it goes much further.
This still, and FEMA map is based on elevation, so you'll have to make sure that that is met, too.
Good point, and we will do that. We have to do that anyway.
So, tell us about the lots.
Okay, so the land is, there's an AT, I do only, my projects in Wilton have AT&amp;T esmen, so. There's an AT&amp;T esmen right down the middle of this site. I called the people in Burlington, this is another abandoned AT&amp;T line, just like the other one. So we can move it, they have no problem with us moving it. So that's one of the things we gotta do. So there's an AT&amp;T line and a path that kind of cuts right through, diagonally through the land. The land's beautiful, beautiful land, and some of it's a little bit, you know, quite old road. Obviously, it was a farm land at one point. So, one of the ideas is connecting through, but because the road connects right up here, it doesn't seem to be What's that?
I would say don't connect it.
That's what we've heard, is not connected. So why connect it for no reason, for no benefit? And everybody likes to live on cul-de-sacs, too, and it makes it less work. So this is a cul-de-sac land, one road has five lots, I think the other road has six lots. So it's eleven lots with two cul-de-sacs, this is an A and R lot. And the idea for the development is to, probably, we're talking, David and I are trying to convince the Brown brothers to, just like we did in Sanderson. And then we're developing a report, just like we did in Sanderson, where they would sell these lots off to fund the development process, and then have control of the whole process, and at the end, sell a project that's all approved the way they want it approved, the way you want it approved. So that's kind of the program, and I know it's my modus operandi nowadays, but that's what we're trying to do here, is to
So how long have the cul-de-sacs?
Oh, they're like three hundred fifty feet.
This is the longest, this one is?
This is four fifty, this is three fifty.
That's a narrow, really narrow section between the two.
So the big question is, what do you think? Is this something that we should pursue in this way?
It's a hard intersection out to Tattleman Road. Actually, this was looked at by, I guess, the nephew of Mary Brown, and said, well, why is this on the worst part of the road?
We came right at the apex to try to maximize the views.
Yeah, I drive that like, once a week, I know that corner, it's
What about clipping the corner?
But you're not asking us for anything, you're not, this is just by
This is conceptual to me.
But this is by right, I mean, you're not
This is totally by right, right. There's no special permits, no deals, no trade-offs, or anything like that.
Is that, does that water research district? That wouldn't come into play with this, it's residential.
Well, it makes sense to cluster houses together.
We looked at that, there was no benefit. By trying it, it's not going to save, we're already saving the wetlands and the buffer of the wetlands. There was nothing to save.
No, in that part of town, that would look weird. It's nothing like that.
I think it'd be better off to make a deal with the four and a half acres, and say that that's part of an arrangement.
You know, you shouldn't take it off
Not make a deal, that's not the word.
Well, actually, people talk, people talk about four and a half acres, because it's landlocked, and town really doesn't have to do anything with it, and will probably eventually go to the towns, how it goes.
Maybe we can waive some of the fees if you give it to us, how's that?
I don't, I don't think you should take the, excuse me, I don't think you should take the cluster zoning concept out of the picture, yet.
You mean, it's the way it is now, or something different?
This is a conventional cluster, where you put all the houses very close together.
You're not getting any open space? In that part of town?
Yes.
No, but you're not getting anything?
Because in that part of town, there's, there's essentially no development right now. And if you cluster them together, you'll affect the surrounding biology less.
Not really, I'm just, I'm not going to let you peek at this, but don't get upset or something. This is what we try to do, connecting the two. We've got some bonus lots and all that to pay for. And you see what we're saving is the same areas that we're saving anyway.
Yeah.
But less lots, less lots this way?
Less lots.
Less lots this way?
You also could, I know other parts, people have suggested more compact farmhouse-type development, high energy savings, higher price point, et cetera, that, that may be a plus.
Well, that's, I'm on board with that, though.
You're not, you're not gaining anything, you're still keeping the same open space.
It's a different market.
What you're gaining, Mark, is you can, you can completely forget about this, that that's a, there's wildlife that lives around this area.
Yeah, especially
And they've always lived there.
We're protecting, I mean, part of the wildlife here. And I could go back and look at, for example, Lot 9, there's going to be a detention basin, and that's why that lot's extra big. But that's also good for wildlife, too, the detention basins.
Yeah, well, wildlife have corridors, and the corridors, this, this is going to, this is going to put a highway right through the corridor.
Well, I disagree.
There's a corridor here, and there's a corridor here. This is not wetland you can't walk, that's just
Wildlife, wildlife don't travel where you tell them to travel. They, they, they're all over this area.
Okay, I've got the corridors maintained. I did just what you said, anything else
Even if you get an open space, it's going to be, it's going to look exactly
This is what we have to do.
If you clustered them in the middle, then you'd have a corridor this way, you'd have a corridor this way, you'd have a corridor all around, just the, the cluster in the center.
Corner right there.
In the center.
Already have the corridor. Or this corridor. Corridor between the houses.
Well, that's a good point, Jerry. I could possibly create some no-cut zones on the back of those lots.
Except they're not very wide.
Do not separate them, the two wetland areas.
It'd be better anyway to keep the two projects separate.
I mean, it sounds like this is something that Rich and I actually saw in a workshop on Westwood, sort of, developing houses.
This fits perfectly into the cluster type of concept.
I just, I mean, personally, if I were you, I wouldn't go any against her in that, for that part of town, nothing would look like that. It'd be a tough sell. Who's going to want, who's going to want to get that?
You're more than welcome.
You wanted, you wanted to say something at the end, you got cut off, go ahead.
Hi. You know, at least, in Richie's defense, if you, if you did, made something nice, it would be cost, it would be less, you know, less cost for the driveway and the road and that type of thing, and to cluster in that sense. It's just to reduce cost to build, which means you, you know, your profit ratio goes up. The one on the other side, I'm not really quite certain, the corridor between these two, if you put more houses over here, and let nice open field for the numerous houses to have a ball field of their own there, you know, that but again, it's, what you're doing right there looks plenty nice also, so. There's just little thoughts you could have for, you know, what developer thinks is the best way to go about, you know?
See, if you clustered this, you could, you could eliminate one of these driveways. You could come in, you could, you could put all the, all the housing in one central spot. Now, what you've done here, remember you started, you started the conversation by, by explaining how some guy's house was displaced on 495 when the 495 came through? Well, that's exactly what this is going to do to the wildlife there, is you're putting a 495 right through that old forest. Now, if you, if you cluster them in the middle, then you create an island for the houses and the, and the, and the rest of the natural areas is pretty much undisturbed.
We're going to have the same problem, just so you know. You've got to, you've got to juxtaposition with your cluster law and that sewer issue. Because this is, if we were to cluster this, we'd want a shared sector system again. Sooner or later, you guys have to address that issue. The solution to this cluster is a shared system, where we now can't cross the pipes over the roadways. So, yeah, that same problem's going to pop up every, every one of these cluster projects, so.
Just so you know, I'm advocating for your plan the way it is, I don't want you to fuss out on this. And I don't care about the wildlife corridor going between the two. It looks like you already have one.
We certainly have a difference of opinion on this plan.
That's a cer, alright, that's why we'll vote on it.
We don't have to vote on it.
No, when we come to you for it, we'll vote on it.
Brainstorm, you know?
But we're going to go, the next step for us is to do soil testing. So if we do, when we cluster with, like you said, Richard, with soil test in the middle, and spend our days doing that. If we're going to do this plan, we soil test on these lots, we have to know what, kind of where to go to spend the money on different things. I really like this plan, I've looked at all the different ones. I don't see the benefits of any kind of an open space on this, the way that property is and the way the wetlands are.
I don't either, I like the plan as it is.
And I think if we, we work on that other lot in the back there of Town Forest, we can, we'll all get what we want, basically.
Yeah.
Well, except for, except for the wildlife that exists there right now. We lose out because we end up with a 495 corridor right through that woods.
You're amazing, you, you want to commercialize 119, and you're worried about wildlife in a residential zone where you can build houses.
Jerry, this is, this is the project we're talking about right now.
Yeah, that's the project we're talking about.
You're welcome. I don't need more dissent, I'm, I'm good, I have my direction.
But, but, you know, there's a wetland here, and actually, there's a stopover area. People have spotted two eagles actually by the lakeside, by the swamp. I mean, it is used a lot by wildlife, there's no question.
No question, this, this is a huge wetland area across the street. I mean, it's just enormous, not just the eagles, I'm sure there's tons of
They're all sorts of, all of that, yes.
And we're not, I should have mentioned, we're not doing any wetland tiller, none.
Right.
Another project, a lot of wetlands, no wetland tiller.
Not going to fill any in?
Nope, try not to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Isaac, yes?
Just want to let you know that I think the four acres, Richard, I listed on there.
Yeah?
It's up, it's up Arv.
It's up Arv. It's on the other side.
Yeah, the town forest on the other side.
Yeah, the town forest is, did I point it on the wrong? This one, down here.
Yeah, well, it's shown up here.
No, that's a different
No, that's a different piece.
That's a different, that's Lot B, they have Lot B here, and then they have four and a half acres down here.
In the middle of it.
How long ago did Dana expand the AT&amp;T line?
Yeah, I don't know whether, it's a long time ago. The other one was a long time ago. This one was, I haven't talked to me too detailed, but I just wanted to check.
How long ago was Piterino messing around with this stuff up there?
Couple, four, five years, five, four, five years.
A little bit longer than that.
It was still active then?
Well, there may be different AT&amp;T lines.
There's different AT&amp;T lines. That one that I did on the other side of Wilson, that's, I can't remember the name. This one, I think, is the Adirondack line, they have names for them all.
Because, okay, because we have budgets, okay, we just found. But it's funny, it's the AT&amp;T line that went through there. When this other fella, Mr. Piterino, was messing around with it. They used to have a guy come and sit there and watch it, and because it was like thirty thousand dollars a minute, he broke the line.
Right, the fiber optic line, he dumped stuff on the corridor. He actually dumped on the
That's the active
These lines are, they're bizarre, they're like in tar paper.
They're the old lines.
Old fashioned.
They're, they're old line, and they're part of the Department of Defense.
Yeah, they probably went up to the old AT&amp;T tower and dropped it down, wrote.
Exactly.
Yeah.
They, AT&amp;T hires companies around the nation, and the one that they hire here is in Burlington. And they worry about their lines, they're amazing, they're engineers and field people. They wear boots all the time, they work in a nice beautiful office, but the office has mud everywhere, and they're great guys to work with. They're just down-to-earth guys, they, they want to get things done, I like them.
Yeah, they're very responsive, they've allowed some trails to be on some AT lines.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we have a nine, nine PM informal discussion, Foster Street Grimes Lane, Dirk and Tree Farm, open space residential.
You can take that with you, right in the back.
Okay. Oh, God, yeah. Okay. Yeah? Then I'd have to step off. I think this failed.
Today, David, determined members of the board for the Record Joe Pissola from Hancock Associates, continuing our informal discussion on Just staying, staying for a moment with the, with the yield plan. Kind of refined it with regards to the, the wetland line and the geographic data that we picked up. And we've got some ideas that we'd like to initially talk about in the intersection of Foster and Grimes. But essentially, we've got a thirty-seven lot yield that includes the farmhouse on a, on a separate lot in this small parcel of L here. And what we're, what we're contemplating down on, at the intersection, is to realign the lines to, to pull the existing roadway up outside of the, the, the tracks, and just make that a, a better, better situation, safety line. That would necessitate some, some wetlands crossing, or some, some wetlands impact, so we'd have to put a conservation on that. But we think, based on what's out there, and based on everything that we see, that's, that's, that's a good job. And then the idea would be to, to kind of get rid of the S curve and, and bring that, that roadway up to the intersection here. So the old section of Grimes would kind of be left in its state, with the stone walls, narrow, and that would kind of be left with the, with the farmhouse. So, we'd like to continue the discussion on, on, on the yield plan, because that kind of sets the base moving forward. Are there any questions on, on that plan?
No, this is very clear.
Moving, moving along to, to some more ideas for the OSRD. What we're looking at here is twenty-nine lots on the, on the, on the north side, possibly some, some rental units on, on the south side. We've got a large active open space area up in here that we envision would be maybe donated to the town for, for ball fields. And we've got a, a large lot left with the farmhouse and barn. And then there's a possibility of, you know, some land left over for, for train station park. Things that we talked about, but, but are all kind of put down on paper. The lots themselves, you know, we're looking at having enough room for, for fairly modest footprints on the, on the homes, frontage on the main roads, and, you know, in, in some cases, sheer drives. But each of the lots would have frontage on, on the main road. Some additional open space or conservation land around some of the wetlands in the eastern portion of the block. These are just ideas, kind of putting on everything we talked about down on paper to further the discussion for the board. I do have
What's that across the street?
Across the street, that as well, okay.
What's the piece across the street?
Here?
Yeah.
That was the idea that, that we, we had mentioned, you know, posses and some multifamilies, some rentals. This would be two, four lots.
Boy, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Great, great idea.
That would be a knockdown of Kern House, or the Kern House, or the
That would retain the existing farmhouse and barn.
Yeah.
Those would be condos.
The Kerns would remain.
No, this I don't, Joe, I don't think, I don't think that's right, the barn is in excellent condition, but the farmhouse is
The farmhouse, the farmhouse is
The farmhouse would need to be rebuilt. The barn is in excellent condition.
Yeah, that's the only.
I thought we wanted to promote that kind of housing along the train station.
That's what we need to talk about. We need to talk about the whole project. We have a letter from Town Council that brings up a few of the issues that, you guys all read the letter from Chris?
Bobber.
In the middle of reading it?
Speed read it.
Yeah, I mean.
This is the first time I've seen it. Could you paraphrase it for us, Mark?
Yes, please.
Well, Chris has a concern about the entrance at Dirkie Land.
I know whose it is. I'm not gonna work for it.
That comes in, it's only about 18 wide or 10 wide at this point. There's a cab rail on each side of it. Who owns it? Is it actually Tom? Is it private? Is it part of the MBTA? What's the deposition of the disposition of that land? That's the first thing, because that's the access to this project.
This drawing shows them going into the wetlands and making that much wider and moving it further north.
That's the improvement.
No, no, just read the first paragraph.
The conception, the conventional, you know, that has a lot to do with how many lots, you know. Do you have the 750-foot rule? The road can't, you can't improve it past 750 feet to, you know, to count more lots. So do we wanna look at that? Do we wanna wave? Do we wanna talk about it? There's issues, there's a few issues with this that we have to address before we go to the next stage. That's kind of the gist of Chris's letters. Safety of the entrance at Foster Street and Grimes Lane. You get the railroad crossing right there. Are we abandoning time plan? Are we getting new load in this? You know, it's.
Yeah, you also have a gas line there. I know there's a concern with the MBTA committee about the gate crossing there. One of the issues is the Tenneco gas line and the wetlands, and they claim the equipment moved very much. It was very low latitude. So I would think that would.
I didn't hear everything you said.
Right, when there are neighbors of the area concerned about when the T went in and put down the cross gating on Grimes Lane, which seemed a little bit unusual, people tried to move that, change that. MBTA said it wasn't possible because of the Tenneco gas line on the ground on the wetland side and the Liam there. So there were some issues there. There isn't much flexibility.
It was, it was my understanding through the chair to Mr. McGyver, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. It was my understanding that the gate that they put there is only a half gate because there's not enough swing to it and that there has been a hazard condition down there in the sense that somebody could come out of there. Not the neighbors, the three or four neighbors that live there and know it, but let's say somebody illegally parked on the side there could come out of there not knowing, bypass the gate and run right into the tracks. And I think that the proposal here is intended to improve that situation. So we move the Foster Grimes entrance off that area, so it's not right there at the Tenneco line on the tracks. It will be on conservation land, you're right, it's wetlands, but there's a proposal here to get the conservation notice to do that, and then that will improve that. Also, Mark, what you were speaking to is.
Okay, helps having the detail.
Yeah, and what you were speaking to was the Grimes Lane, public-private argument. I don't know if you've got an amendment to this letter, but when I was talking to Chrissy today, he did indicate that if Grimes Lane is public, the developer has the ability to widen and improve it on his own land, subject to obtaining the permission of the town to do that, which probably goes through the selectmen and not through the town meeting vote. And then when he's done, proposing that the town accept the improved and widened area as a public way. If it's private, he still has the same opportunity to widen it as long as he has the landowner permission consent, in which, in this case, we would be the land, the developer would be the landowner, and then the same thing going into town meeting to propose it. So I think the Grimes Lane, public-private issue kind of disappears in the sense that it's.
Joe, I should do it to you.
Have you?
I understand.
Okay.
It's not intermuscible.
That's what it says, thank you.
It's not, it's not over yet. We still need, we need to know what it is. That's, whether it's public, whether it's private. You know, where the MBTA fits into this piece, because you're talking about a strip that's only 8 feet wide. Grimes Lane is only 8 feet wide right now. There's a cab rail on it. Is it the town's? Is it the MBTA? Is it private? Nobody knows that. It has to be resolved before we put a subdivision on top of it.
But in either, in any one of those scenarios, there's a solution that these, that they proposed.
I know, but also, there's a different pathway for each one of those conclusions.
That's right. We're not saying anything different.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's, they have to decide.
They gotta resolve one way or the other, but that's.
I think obviously we'll have to deal with the property line issue. But essentially, just to go over some of the detail here, you've got the gas line here that runs down the center of the paved area of the existing Grimes. Grimes comes in just down by the railroad tracks. You're actually inside the gate at that point. That's why we feel it's important to move that north, so that gate can be established, so that this intersection is outside the MBTA railroad line, providing that safety. So it's not working within and around the gas line or within the B and M railroad right of way. It's really working within either the locus property, the layout for Foster, the layout for Grimes. And there's, there's a piece of old Clark Road in here, too, that, it isn't totally clear right now, and I mean, our line's titleized, but we'll work all that out as far as where are the lines of property, where are the town ways, limits of the town ways, limits of the public ways. But essentially, our proposal is working primarily within the, in this area with the locus.
Okay. The next issue is the 750 feet. They have to decide, where do we wanna go with that?
Well, our, you know, our thoughts on that would be that, you know, by developing these loops, just working on the conventional lab, that we've got intersection points in which you have multiple means of eagles. This short section could be bulwarded so that, you know, even down here, you've got two means. But each time you get to an intersection, you've got two means to get out. There's something in the way here, you know, you're coming out this way, here, you're going up that way. And that's kind of how we set that up, so that we feel this means the intent, because these two cul-de-sacs are less than 750. And then with regard to the OSRD, at least in this form, we've got similar, multiple means, and that this last leg is the 750.
I don't know about that.
Mark, I pulled out the prior concession.
Oh, the first?
Right? And there's no one doesn't show that at all, correct?
Show what?
The one they showed us before where it said possible access to Foster Street, which is further, wait, well up the.
Way up there, right?
Well up the area. And now they've got everything coming out of the exact same place down by the gate, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I think too wild about that.
And if you look at this first one, there's 750 feet is right where that existing little house is. If you count it from Foster Street, that's the, the intention of the bylaws is to go from Foster Street, not from wherever the roads intersect. It's from the beginning of the road, which is Foster Street, up to 750 feet. That's as far as, it's just like the cul-de-sacs we just saw in the last plan. That's, the intention of it is to have no more development after the 750 feet. This is more than that. You know, if you look from Foster Street all the way up to the end of that last hall, that's the other way. Because Grimes Lane is dead and hallowed, correct? The point I'm trying to make is, we need to sit down and discuss appropriate lots, where the benefit to the town lies, where we wanna go with this, because we've never, we've never waved the 750 feet up and come out. Always have another alternative, maybe try to come out of, come out on Foster Street for me if there's second means out there.
If we, if we came up here, just talking about the conventional, the best base, if we were to take this, this road and connect it through.
Yeah, I bet you too.
Then we'd have to accept through that, and that would be less than 750.
Oh, that'd be, that would be more than 750, but, but I'm talking, I'm not just talking conventionally. You have to do it for the open space plan as well.
Oh, no, I understand, but we have to, we can't prove it on this one, but we can't, we can't move forward with the.
Well, the Board of Health also has some issues, because they haven't seen any soils from you as to whether or not those lots actually exist where the letter from the Board of Health about that. They've seen no testing, no soils. They can attest to whether or not those lots are buildable as well.
That'll come, that'll come.
It's sort of kind of critical, because you have to do a.
Yeah, we can't base eyes on this.
No, but we've, I mean, we've gone over.
I thought it was in, I thought it was in.
We have, on a preliminary basis, you know, we've got some good results out here as far as permeability. We've got high water table. We can deal with high water table. Permeability is, is it per- percolable? So we tested down in here, there's land down in here that perks. We've tested all up in here. So it's, the question for the board would be is, you know, are we going out improving each and every lot with two curves? Or are, are we getting a, you know, a sense, even if we've got to provide the test results to the Board of Health, to get them, to get the, first, we need to get you to the point that you're comfortable with the convention, to set the number.
There's a lot of wetlands.
Move to the OSRD.
There's a lot of wetlands.
So the ground wire comes up, the lot in every place, as you've noticed in your sheets.
You have a couple of lots that are questionable as to, you know, lot 19, lot 18, lot 2, as to whether or not you could get a conventional system in there anyway, because there's so much wetlands there.
We could provide, you know, individual lot development plans for those to show thousands of acres. And whether or not we have, some of our testing was in those areas. We can share that with the board. What we need to understand is the level of intensity that we need to go through to prove this plan, to set the number, the base number, to then move into the OSRD. Because otherwise, we're.
I think Mark has a point. If you were to connect a, an emergency access off that last loop to Foster Street, it'd be, in my mind, it'd be fine.
I don't consider that to be fine. An emergency access and to circumvent the 750 feet and then.
Well, what if it was a full road?
That makes more sense to me, and it looks like a hell of a lot better way to enter and leave the property than down right by the railroad tracks.
I'm okay with that.
But you're talking about that for the conventional. What about when you move to the open space?
But you still have, you still have temporary connections.
I think the first, the first hurdle is how many lots. And that's what the problem is. I don't think 37 is reasonable, given the uncertainties that are still out there. That's, that's the problem on that, I'm grasping.
Can we, can we kind of enumerate those? So if we had a fully functioning road that was compliant with some of the standards for centerline curvature and all of those, those things, and we could prove that we've got agreements for the land itself, then the 750 hurdle is at least face value overcome.
Not necessarily.
Why?
Well, because you're gonna look at it this way, right?
Whatever.
You're gonna have to come back into Grimes Lane somewhere, okay? And then your 750 is gonna start from there.
From where?
You can, wherever you come back in on Grimes Lane.
No, if it's a loop.
You still have 750 from where they come.
If he connects that bulb, and then you count, and it loops all the way back, it's a loop, so it's.
Are you talking about from Lot 31 and, it doesn't even look like it has a number on it. Where the loop on the right-hand side of the, right there, and then, then go to your right downhill? Is that what you're saying, Mark, from there, 750?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's from here, 750, so we can't have any lots further than 750 from this point going this way.
Right.
Or from this point going this way.
Right.
So I think we need.
Well, we'd have to see it. It would have to see how Foster Street.
And my question once again ends up being is, even though I don't like it coming down there, down out by the railroad tracks, I mean, that's a big cluster. It, I believe it's necessary to have the two ways in and out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, personally.
Do you favor the improvement that we're proposing? The improvement?
Of the road?
Of Grimes.
Of Grimes? The way I look at it, if you own both sides of the street, it's yours to do what you want with it. If you wanna make it bigger at your own expense and bring it up to town standards for us to accept it at some point in time, then that's more power to you. But as far as, you know, the two ways in and out, I, that's, I would prefer to see that, no matter how you look at it. And 750, the way I would consider it is right from Foster Street. That, and if you didn't, if you didn't put the addition up in Foster, further up, and you took it from the existing, you know, where you keep saying the post right there, 750 starts there, as far as I'm concerned.
If you don't have the other access.
If you don't have the other access, in and out. That's me personally. That's what I'm looking at.
And so when we go to the OSRD, can I just turn that over for me, just so I understand? So when you go to the OSRD, you're going to wanna see that access coming in as well? The second means of access on the OSRD?
Personally.
Okay, so the question is, is there any merit to getting the open space? And do we, do we compromise the open space by bringing the road through it? That active open space at the top there was targeted, that it might be ball fields. If we're bringing the access in there, it's not gonna, how is it?
Isn't that, that's, what's the topal up there? That's, that's, drops right off up there, doesn't it?
Drops, but then it's flat.
Plus also you have no other access.
In that, in that part right there.
The only flat part is 18, 19, and part of 17 is the only place where I'm not seeing any topal lines, right? To the right-hand side here.
There's, there's a hill here, and a ridge.
But going to your right.
If they have access, then ball fields up there.
I think safety is more important than ball fields.
Okay, that's what you're saying.
The other problem is still.
You're still like, you know, how many lots you.
You still need to develop, right now, the way Grimes said, to take deep wide, and I wouldn't sign off on an 8-foot-wide road.
Well, I think his plan shows it being improved.
Being improved, right. You're gonna have to make sure that it has the ability to improve it.
Well, that's, again, we're on both sides of it.
We don't theoretically, being at the railroad, that's the other side of it.
No, they're on both sides of it.
Well, even if he, I don't care if he adds 50 feet to one side of it, not the other, if it's his own to move.
The railroad, this is all railroad.
You're making me dizzy then.
But that's part of it that has to be developed.
He's talking about shifting the road to the right.
They don't own this side, but I'm just saying, they have to make sure that all the ducks in a row, that they actually own that strip.
You're just talking about title issues, that's it. You're not, you're not talking about planning board better.
Title issues, make sure you have the ability to do that.
That's not, don't want to get into that. So back to the density then, I think, because you've made it clear about coming in from the other entrance, and I think you're, you're all in agreement about that.
I'm, sorry, I wouldn't mind seeing it, you know, just a, like a fire road. Because I think the ability to have a field back there is a plus for this whole project.
Yeah, I mean, I, look, I mean, if you, we have waved the 750 feet before. Yeah, we have.
Yeah, yeah.
What are you talking about?
For 31 houses or 30, how many? 30 something?
Chesnut Village. Chrisville, Chrisville Road, you waived it.
No, we didn't.
They got 1,200 feet.
No, they didn't. Chrisville loops around.
The 40A out behind the 40B.
Yeah, that's right.
We did waive it.
You know, we should be looking at this in terms of what makes the most sense.
What?
And use our, and using our bylaws as a, as a guide. Because this is, this is a very significant project.
It's not Chrisville.
Now, I think if, I think if there are concerns about having two accesses, all right, I'm okay with that. Except that I don't, I hate to see a perfect opportunity. all right, I'm okay with that, except that I don't, I hate to see, um, a perfect opportunity for some, some open, you know, some kind of field up in that, in that area. Go away for a road, for, you know, a perceived issue that might be down, that might never...
It's a driveway. The only issue I could see happening that development is in the morning, and train comes, and everyone's piling into that parking lot. It's nuts down there. I mean, I've done it for years. That could impact, the residents could be impacted by that, so I don't mean...
It's a dangerous intersection.
If you, if you, basically, there's going to be periods during the morning where you cannot go left, right?
So, so you're talking about a rush hour? Every single town has rush hours in certain components?
No, I know, but not every single town has a gate that drops across the tracks. You can't go left.
We have stoplights that do the same thing. The, the issue of, of single access to a developments is not new. Lots of towns have single access to developments. We get the mess.
You have a town that says it's not allowed.
Well, all right. I, whatever our zoning says, we should have, we should, we should think about what makes the most sense here, because this is very significant.
Yeah, I think...
I think you have to take into consideration safety, and I think you have to think about two ways in, in order to service this.
I'm not saying not, I'm not saying...
At least we'll look at it. Let's put it that way. I agree with Richie. It definitely chops the plan off. If you've got to slam a road, a second road up there, it's not, it's not as attractive looking as a site as it would be as if it's the way it's proposed now.
And, and, and the loss of that open space, the loss of that field.
You have to look at, you have to take a look at it. You can't just, you, I, I can't vote for, for one way in. With 37 houses coming out.
All right. Ken, could you, could you see yourself agreeing to a, a, a fire-type road?
I'd have to look at it. I'd have to see it. I'd have to see what the best...
Still, yeah, I mean, everyone out of this, out in the same place. Maybe move it down a little bit, try and protect the field a little bit, you know, what is perceived to be a ball field. But how much, I don't know if there's, if that line of sight or not.
You can't. You gotta, you live in 40 feet.
How much do you want out for the front?
I like the idea of a lot. You can nimpact wetlands so long as you replicate some places.
The boulevard, how, how mu, why can you make that, that primary?
Joe, can you answer that?
We, yeah, we, we could do up to 18s for the boulevard, for the...
I mean, that's reasonable, right?
It's too close to, it's too close to the train track.
Why are you worried about the train track?
So he says he can do it, then let it keep trying.
What is the issue with the train?
Gee, I don't know. Safety?
You know, a, a stoplight does the same thing as that train track.
It, it's a little bit different.
It's a little bit different. You have a lot, you have... We should look at all the different options. That's all I'm trying to say.
We can, we can look at those options. I, I, I think we, we hear you on, on your, your concerns, and we'll come back with, with something that, that tries to address them.
I'm not so concerned about two roads, one road. I'm concerned about density. I just think 37 lots is too many lots out there.
Right. It's high density, you want to catch this.
No, it's a...
It's exactly where you want the density because you've got the transportation corridor.
This is where clustering would actually make sense.
Absolutely.
Let's, let's, let's talk about, let's talk about the number. I mean, what, what we have presented here is what we think is a compliant, from, from a zoning standpoint, from a subdivision standpoint, notwithstanding, if we could connect this, still show 37 lots that have ample frontage, ample area, and what we believe to be developable land on each lot in, in an area for septics. The, the question is, is, is how deep do we have to go to, to prove that's a board?
I think, I'd like to see multiple ways in and out, different scenarios.
No, no, I'm, I'm just trying, because, because in this, in this...
I'm not asking for a perk, I'm...
In this world, we don't care what this looks like. This is, this, what we care about is because, because you don't want to build this, we don't want to build this. We just want to start at a number so that we can then move forward. So it's the number 37. What we've shown here is compliant roadways in accordance with subdivision, your subdivision rules and regulations, minimum centerline radius with the roads, intersection separations, all of those things, frontage lot area, um, and an area within each lot that we feel it would, would support development of a house within the setbacks and a, and a septic system. So if we only have to, if we, if we have to talk to the Board of Health, provide some information on, on the soils that we found out there to get them a little more, a little bit more comfortable, there, they should really care about what we're going to build and can we support that. And of course, we're going to move through that when we get to, to defend it and, and separate it and design it, and would be remiss to, to not, not do that compliant.
Well, let me, let me ask a question. The third, lots 34, 37, 30, 32, you go potentially beyond...
They what?
Again, we have to s...
Could they be a four?
We have to start at a base.
I hear what you're saying.
And then, and then move to, to whatever the OSRD wants to look like. And what is within this force purr, purview under the OSRD to, to...
Can you do us a favor, give us a plan like this when you come in the next time?
What is?
Color.
Oh, color.
That way we can see all the pieces that fit into this, what's open space, what's wet, where the roads are going to go with it. Makes it a little easier for us to look at it conceptually. If this was nice and easy, we could see this, here's the wetlands, here's the roadways, here's the houses. They're even at, he even put septic, the conceptual is the way the septic system. Makes it a lot easier for us to, to, the leap of faith at 37. Once we, if we saw all this, we saw all the boxes in there, it would have been easier for us to say, yeah, you know what? 37 would fit. So if we could get it to make it a little, make it a little easier for us to agree that 37 is the number. Way it is right now, it's a little confusing. We can't really see the wetlands. I mean, you have to really look at it to kind of get a feel for everything. This just makes it a little easier.
We can do it.
Don't you agree, isn't this a little easier to look at?
Yes, that is nice.
So we, are we in agreement with this 37, or what are, what are...
No, I think, I think we're in agreement that we need to set a finite number before we send them marching with the open space.
Well, what would, what, when you say, I don't think we're in agreement with 37, what is preventing you from, from agreeing that 37 house lots won't fit on that draw?
Because you're over 750 feet from the entrance of the roadway.
All right, well, we're going to, they're going to fix that.
Well, we need to see that, Richard, before they go there.
Let's imagine that that...
We can't imagine that.
Imagine that that's in it.
I'm not, you know what, I'm not as creative as you are.
Do you have any issue? You've been, you've been a planning board for how many years?
Too long.
All right. You're, so imagine that there's a road. Do you have any issue with 37 lots in that drawing?
I do, I do.
What is, what is your issue?
I don't think he's got 37 up there.
He shows it right there.
He shows them right there with one way in. He does, the wetlands have been taken. I'd like to see a plan that shows the wetlands, that shows the relationships to the lots, to the septic systems, to the wetlands, just like, just like Mr. Bren did for us. I'd like to see that, so that, then I'd just sit there and say, yeah, you know what, works perfectly. Right now, you can't, you can't really tell.
All right. I, I can, I can, in my opinion, I can see 37 lots there. And, and my opinion, I can see this working very well.
Thank you.
Now, and I've only been a planning board member for, for six or seven years.
See where we're at.
See where anybody else is.
Can you build like two or three of them down there? I agree with what you're saying, and the reason why I bring up the affordable is, I mean, if we're going to have to, if we have to waive something, we should get something in return. You should consider, you should ask your admin to consider. In the spirit of that particular location, which is a butt of public transportation system, it's part of all of this stuff we've been doing with magic and housing development plan and all the other stuff we're doing with the state. That's an area that that would work very well.
But what she's asking you is, are you comfortable with leaving, having these gentlemen leave tonight with their marching orders that you want to see an open space plan with 37 lots? Are you comfortable with 37 lots right now?
I'm not going to lose a wing.
Yes.
And I, I think it's more than maybe possible. And I think it isn't just us, but it's also the fire department, the, the police department, other people, seeing a relationship to the roads, the wetlands, and get a little better feeling. So I think it will get reduced from 37.
But, but leaving here today, you are not particularly concerned about that we're showing 37. I understand we have to go through everything else.
Well, I, I think 37 is a large number for that complex piece of property with all the wetlands and high groundwater. And I do think it does need another access road. Uh, the various scenarios portrayed about, well, if there's a train problem, yeah, you don't want anyone confined to Grimes Lane. That's, there's been concern even with a few houses on it.
Don't any of those houses are, are apartment or townhouse type?
It, it, it's still been an issue whether it's proposed or not.
Well, Richard, you're not, you're looking at the wrong plan. You should be looking at that plan right there. Not the, not the open space, that plan. Because you don't get to that plan until you approve that plan. You're looking at the wrong one.
I have a great imagination, and my imagination tells me that 37 houses are going to fit on that plan. I've already moved past that to this.
Okay. Peter, what do you think? Do you want to see more conceptual? Do you want to see more delineation? Do you want to see...
Oh, I want to see it all.
Before you sign on on 37 lots to go to an open space plan?
I, I, I don't think, I told you before, I, I pound nails for a living. I don't care if they don't build another house in Littleton. I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather no more houses get built, so...
All right.
How do I, I don't think 37 will fit there. But just from all the years passed and hearing about wet and...
Put your planning board ad on, Peter.
Once again, it doesn't matter to me what you do. Whatever these laws tell me you can do, that's the way I go. I do the best thing I can do for what the town needs. I think the fewer houses there would be the better. That's what I think would be best for the town. But I understand, you put your money, your dime up, and you should get your dime's worth. So whatever you can make pass, have at it. I would like to see a little bit more, personally.
I'm pro housing. I want more houses. I want a Division II powerhouse instead of a...
And then you walk back that way.
Move back, move back to act.
Good, good current planning standards tell you that you want to put housing near public transportation. This is the only opportunity we have in this town to do that.
I think we have, I think we have some direction. I think we're, we're, we're currently, the position of the board members. I don't know where we want to go from here. Another, another discussion concept? Or do we want to try, we can, we can, we want one more meeting with the conceptual?
I think so.
One, one more meeting with the conceptual, a second address, and we'll have some, we'll have some pretty colors for you and maybe some proof certain that we got those lots that you think are marginal that we can do.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go, stay on this, stay on this, stay on this plan until we've got, got the number set before.
Can we send, do you have the capacity to send something to the Board of Health for those, at least for those marginal lots, so that they're signed off on, that, that they're...
We can test it with Doug and, and give Doug some data.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
But that, our decision can't be based on...
Richard, it has to be based on that.
It can't be based in our decision on another board's decision, especially Board of Health.
Mark, it's really in our bylaw though. Technically, we can make them perk those lots.
We can make them perk every single, yeah, it is, it's right in there. We can make them perk every single one, to prove that they have those lots, if we really want...
I'm not saying I want to make them perk every one.
I'm not saying that either. I'm just saying, it's based on what you can really build up there, not what Richard thinks in his mind that might work. It has to really be based on scientific facts, Richard, not speculation of a plan that you saw.
Darren, that bylaw that we passed last spring, is that...
I have a good feeling.
Did that actually, did that require, um, the proposers to test every one of those lots?
Well, if it's only bylaws, they're on the desk there.
It, it, it's a process. You do so many...
Okay. Well, we can argue what ourselves all we want.
Anybody in the audience have any questions since it's a snowy night and everybody came out? Anyone here?
Can you guys make a suggestion to end the meeting?
Look, I'm leaving. We're done.
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Could you press my button, this type of car, not, not that button? Thank you. I'll go up when I get out there.
Thank you.
Are we going to have any more discussion?
No, we're done, right? We have nothing else to, um, he's going to keep the water for the outside.
So we're good?
We're good, thank you.
Turn the light off.
Oh, I move to close meeting?
We'll move.
That's, that's in our favor. Aye.
Aye.